Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Mr. Geis?
Yes. Okay, I guess, I think we could probably forego the explanation of hearing procedure.
You can read it if you want.
I don't have it. I can't read it.
I would like you to make it up.
I guess we need a reading of the public hearing notice from staff.
Sure. The public hearing notice, Beaver Creek Township zoning commission will meet tonight for proposed text amendment to, or text addition to the Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution. We're here this evening to consider the post addition to the text of Article eighteen, section eighteen point three six. Specifically, section eighteen point three six, trees prohibited in the street right of way. Section eighteen point three six does not exist yet. This would be a completely new section right after eighteen point three five. Planning, growing, raising, or cultivating any tree within the right of way on any township street is prohibited. Nothing in this section shall be deemed to require a change of, or change in plans lawfully approved by the township prior to the effective date of this section. If a tree dies or is otherwise removed from the right of way, the property owner shall not replace that tree in compliance with this section. The township zoning commission will make a recommendation obviously to the board of trustees and they will act on it. I have a brief presentation if you'd like to go through it.
Okay.
So here's our agenda for this evening. Here's the text amendment, Article thirteen. That's what I just read, which is the new section, Article eighteen, section eighteen point three six. The process so far, trustees passed a resolution on May the twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. That was then forwarded on to the Green County Regional Planning Commission. It was unanimously approved, unanimously approved on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. I called today to find why we hadn't got the approval sheet. They haven't got to it yet. They're behind in stuff and people have been out on vacation. So that is forthcoming. I was in attendance at the meeting, so I can guarantee you it was approved unanimously. The public hearing was originally set per the calendar for July fourth. Then we moved it due to the holiday to July eleventh and due some advertising issues that had to be moved again to this evening. So thank you all for adjusting your schedules and being here tonight. Depending on tonight's outcome, it's tentatively scheduled to go for the trustees on August twelfth, twenty twenty four. They have a meeting coming up Monday, but they also need to do their ten day notifications and everything else, so it won't be until August twelfth. As far as staff recommends, approval for the text amendment to the Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution. I've spoke with John Schroeder, who's the deputy director of public service. And this text will, this text change will help tremendously with their operations. They've been having a lot of problems with it. As, not only with the snow plowing, but with delivery trucks, school buses, different things, and trying to keep up with these trees. And also sidewalk issues, the roots tearing up sidewalks in different areas and so on and so forth. So by improving visibility, reducing damage to infrastructure and improving township operations, this amendment addresses the health, safety and welfare issues for the residents of Beaver Creek Township. And that's all I have for you.
Okay, I guess are you serving as the applicant also since there's no trustee here?
We can do the pledge.
We did not.
Can we go back?
If you want to do the pledge, we can stand up and do it. Let's do the pledge.
Putting on the agenda, all it was.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Label.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. No one's like that.
Stretch our legs that way.
Okay, so I just have, are we allowed to ask questions?
Yeah, since I guess you're serving as the applicant and there's no trustee here.
Right.
I guess there are the applicant.
So how, how did we notify people about this? Or did we notify people about this? I mean, usually it's like within a certain parameter when we're talking about a parcel, so.
So text, text change amendments just go to the paper of general circulation, so we advertised it in the paper.
And the paper would be?
Taking daily news.
So I'm just curious how you notify everybody. Okay.
Have a question. It's kind of an odd situation to have the trustees be the applicant.
Oh.
Go ahead.
We can, kind of as a matter of procedure, I guess, the public meet.
Oh, yeah, we didn't say, is there any public?
Oh.
Sorry.
At this time, we'll open a meeting to the public. Anybody for the resolution? Seeing nobody, is there anybody that wishes to speak against the resolution? Seeing nobody for that, we will now close the public portion.
Go on to deliberations?
Pardon?
And go on to deliberations.
And go on to deliberations to discuss among the zoning.
And so you had a question? I'm sorry.
Okay, my question was, this is kind of an odd situation, having the trustees be the applicants, you know, and it's already gone before regional planning. If we change anything in this, is it really going to do any good since they have the final say anyway? So I mean, it just seems like the last couple cases are kind of getting out of order as to procedure wise.
That's, that's true for anything we do, except we've got to sneak preview this time because they've already passed it.
Okay, I mean.
Well, that's what I was curious too, like what is our role, what, why are we here for this if they've already passed a resolution?
Well, they passed the resolution just to send, send it through the process.
It's just not a ordinance or a part of the zoning code until we recommend and then.
Yep, yeah, that is correct.
Similar to if the, sometimes the development department at times has brought text amendments.
Another question I have on this is, you know, I can understand the reasoning behind this. But to establish neighborhoods that, you know, have these trees in right of ways or down a boulevard or whatever, you know. I have a hard time, you know, if a tree falls over that you can't plant one to keep the congruency of the development. I can understand in any new developments or if there's, if they take all the trees out, but for one to die and then you have this big empty spot, you know. I, I don't, I don't know if we could, if there's some way we can word that to, you know. I, I don't know, and keep the congruity of the.
Cause when I was thinking about this, kind of looking at that, like Stonehill Village literally has, I mean, all, they have trees in between the sidewalks and the road. I mean, and I'm assuming that's.
The curb lawn area?
Yeah, that's the right of way. And the whole entire community is like that. I mean, so I can't imagine like if one dies, what they're gonna, I mean, what they're gonna think about.
So my question is, what's the standard definition of a right of way? And is there a setback depending on the type of road it is? Is that well defined anywhere?
The right of way is going to vary depending on the type of road it is. I mean, the right of way is the, is defined. Most of the residential streets, they're fifty foot right of ways, some sixty foot with boulevard designs.
Is it fifty feet from the center of the lawn?
No, it's fifty feet curb to curb.
Curb to curb?
Yeah, or side, back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk.
Okay.
I can bring up.
Even in Stonehill Village, I feel like fifty feet's almost like if people showers.
Yeah, seriously. I can bring up an example if you give me just a second.
Narrow, such narrow roads. And even in some of Hunter's Point, the back, like pacer is way narrow, but we don't have trees like that, so we don't have to worry about it, but. And would something like in Hunter's Point where we have like an island with the trees in it, I mean, that would be considered?
Center Island?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be in the right of way. We'll bring up, oh, when I just went to the wrong, yeah, yeah, not Ohio.
Thing I could think of would be to have some kind of verbiage to where.
It has to be a certain tree.
To maintain, well, maintain the tree at a certain height.
Well, this last sentence kind of kills that, right? So unless you reword this last sentence.
Yeah, that's what I said, I think there's.
Tree dies or is otherwise removed.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming that the middle sentence that says nothing in this section shall be deemed to require a change in plans lawfully approved by the township prior to the effective date of this section. I'm assuming that only applies to the first sentence and not to the third. Applies to the first sentence.
I believe that was the intent of it, yes.
I don't even understand what that.
My concern is, you know, we've got, what, a dozen PUDs in the township?
At least.
And they went through a rigorous planning process. They spent lots of money on development, you know, they came to us, we've approved their plan. They spent tens of thousands of dollars on boulevards and right of way, some even probably more than two thousand, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars. I know in, in the conservancy, there are trees in the right of way that are columnar. And it would seem a shame that, I mean, you're kind of throwing the baby out of the bath water. It would seem a shame that if we lost one of those trees, which provides absolutely no obstruction whatsoever, that we couldn't, that we couldn't replace it. I mean, it's part of the aesthetic of the neighborhood. The, and I know there's several neighborhoods that have, you know, large landscaping plans that would include boulevard and right of way plantings that were approved by us. You know, I, I, I really believe that we should consider grandfathering at least the PUDs. Now, there are other people, I mean, I see other people that have really nice, you know, consecutive plantings. And I, it would be hard, you know, if you had ten trees planted in a row and they're decorative and they're not obstructive. If two of them die, you're gonna have tree, 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 no tree, tree, no tree, no tree, tree. And I, I don't.
Here's an example of what you asked about.
Yeah, cause that's how ours is. So when we have, so is this grandfathered to include like, like say, cause we have the Ober case before us and we've seen kind of how they were projecting to lay it out. So is that including right now, like they already have the trees and stuff? And this is moving forward for new business? Or is this?
So this would, this would kick in at the time of this adoption. So nothing that's been approved yet would.
Would, would be a part of that?
But that one doesn't have a site plan that's been approved yet.
That's been actually approved.
So, yeah, so the, so when the site plan was approved, it would need to meet these regulations.
Yeah, okay.
So remind me, what's the motivation and justification for doing this as a maintenance?
Maintenance is the biggest driving force, yeah.
And someone did some sort of a study analysis to say, you know, if we had this, then we get to save X number of dollars?
Well, statutorily, it's already allowed under section.
And again, why are we, I don't understand why we're meeting.
Because to avoid, so in the future, when someone's putting together a site plan or something, so they see that, cause typically they would look through the zoning code to look at what's allowed, what's not allowed. So moving forward so that they don't in the future plan to have those in the right of way.
I don't think anybody here is taking issue with the future. I think we're taking issue with the grandfather clause that says, if something dies, you can't replace it, then everything's just.
Can wordsmith it and make recommendations. I mean, that's what you're here for.
Cause you know those trees and we have those, those are over at Old Scratch. They literally are really skinny and they just grow straight up. Like there would be no, like going over. Yeah, there wouldn't be anything that would be, cause I could see in the future when they get bigger, how it would be harder to.
I'm all for grandfathering, you know, moving forward on any new development. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, his expectations.
Problem with grandfathering existing developments that have already been through this.
If it's already been approved, why, why would we not change it?
And, you know, it's gonna be a huge expense, you know, I say.
Is it Old Scratch?
Stonehill Village or whatever, I mean, or.
There's these little cool trees that are just like skinny and they grow like just straight up.
Replace it with a sixty foot, I mean, it's gonna be expensive if they do that, but that's their decision.
Seats are.
Gotcha.
So you can't even tell they're there, cause they're so like just skinny growing up. I don't know what kind they are, but they're very neat. So what about all that? Like all this on Dayton Xenia Road, all those trees right there, if they die, we, nobody can replace them, so we're gonna just be treeless along all, everywhere we drive on the road?
Well, treeless, this proposes treeless within that right of way area. Now, it's harder to show the right of way on this. Let me see, do they have?
You can visually see it's that close to the road.
Yeah, it's very close to the road.
I mean.
The other concern I have is particularly with the planned neighborhoods is most of the ones that I've seen have a provision in there that if a tree dies, it has to be replaced. So.
Like in our neighborhood, they do.
Require all of those neighborhoods to go out and change their HOA documents at considerable expense.
Yeah, we went through and did that and it's a considerable expense. We just did a whole, it took us an entire year to go through all our HOA stuff and rewrite it all. And that's, I mean, that's our dues specifically go to our community to make it pretty. I mean, that's what we pay dues for. That's, we don't have any other covenants but the upkeep of our property.
Common grounds.
Mm-hmm.
We were hit hard by the tornados in the conservancy.
Oh, yeah.
And I know that there were boulevard trees that were replaced along the way. I know it's, it's hard to monitor this, but none of them are obstructive. I, I guess what I'm proposing is, is there be a sentence added that says the foregoing section shall not be applied to existing planned developments.
No, amend it that way? I mean, I, that's, I mean, that's where I'm kind of leaning towards.
I think if we, if we, if we simply recommended removing the last sentence from this paragraph, then it basically says moving forward.
Yeah, that's true.
You'll follow this.
Well, but does that last sentence implicate anything?
It suggests that you cannot.
Older? I mean, does that let, is there, I mean, does this, is this showing how it's written that it can be grandfathered? Or, cause it says in that section, moving forward, but then if a tree dies or is otherwise removed, is that like currently then, right?
That'd be like currently, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, just remove the last sentence. That takes, that establishes by default the grandfather, cause it only talks about.
So what that would, what that would change this to would be moving forward, you're not allowed to basically plant a new tree within the right of.
Plans in the future will be approved if you've got a tree.
In the right of way.
In the right of way. I don't know, Jim, you're the lawyer here.
Well, but it says planting, growing, raising, or cultivating, but it doesn't say anything about if it dies in that first sentence.
The, the other option.
Sentence does talk about if it dies. So basically, if we leave that out and it says if it dies, we can still put it in.
Does it help if we say that this only applies to non-decorative trees? Or is that a slippery slope?
Well.
What is non-decorative?
Because that's really what we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a set of trees that are deemed decorative by landscaping standards that only grow so big, or they don't bush out. Or they grow, like the little skinny ones, like you talked about. You know, they're not the big fifty foot.
Woodland trees.
Sugar maple. Tree, woodland trees, yeah.
And I mean, seriously, if you drive through Stonehill Village, I mean, it's nice, but I mean, it just is like, there's a lot of trees going on there. So I could see the point in that there.
Things, you know, Randy just suggested to me is, you know, if you're gonna replace one, replace it with a type of tree that meets.
Yeah, those standards.
Those requirements.
Problem with that is you still have the, wow, this looks out of place. What's wrong with this picture?
Correct.
Cause you have, yeah, the, well, but still, it's better than no tree. I mean, which would you rather have?
Well, most of the, most of the trees that you're gonna find within at least the newer subdivisions are going to be the decorative type trees because.
I think we need to address that in the site plan or, you know, what comes before us on any new development moving forward.
Jeff, you've planted trees along. Are they gonna be in the right of way?
No, mine are all, well, fifty feet.
Yeah, from the center line. How does it work if there's like?
Yeah.
They are gonna be?
And you've replaced them?
Well, that's, that's why they're there, you know, I replaced them.
Okay, so if this read, if, if a non-decorative tree dies or is otherwise removed from the right of way, the property owner shall not replace that tree in compliance with this section. Does that get us where we want to be?
What are you? Go again.
Yeah, we're kidding.
I just made that up.
Where are you reading?
That was a good off the cuff right there, so.
Or we can remove the last sentence. I'm okay either way, but I, I think we ought to give some consideration to these developers and the process that they went through with us.
Well, I don't mind saying if the tree dies or is otherwise removed from the right of way, the property owner should replace it with whatever we're talking about. The ones, the skinny growing ones.
Yeah. So that's being more restrictive.
Well, but I think it's also being more compromising because we're saying, okay, we recognize you don't want the invasive growing trees.
But what you're doing.
You would still like to be able to plant something there.
Is there a classification of decorative trees? I mean, that's the other thing, what's decorative with one person?
Is it defined in our?
There are some, there are some definition of right of way trees or something like that that would get some use.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think would be good, I mean.
No, but in, in doing that, that was.
Yeah, so we could be like specific about what we're saying, speaking to.
They, they're, they're that ideal. They, they grow vertically, they don't.
They don't branch out.
Right.
Sugar maples are the worst.
And those, what are those ones? The, um, those pear ones?
Bradford pear.
Yeah.
What you're saying is, I need to go down to Seaton Thaw just before this passes.
You have, are you allowed to do that inside a tree?
Your grandfather.
No, it's, it's shall not moving forward, right?
Yeah, if they die.
Well, if we take out that last sentence, your development's been in.
No, but this, this is, this doesn't say anything about new developments or, or existing developments, right? This just says if a tree dies, what do you do about it?
Well, what about that? Okay. What about considering then instead of saying, changing it, saying move, like we could add a grandfather clause into that, that says, uh, towards the end of it, any existing, any existing.
Yeah, say it again.
Oh, well, I didn't hear you, sorry.
Oh, no, I said the decorative tree.
Hey, you let me take credit for something.
I said the foregoing section shall not apply to planned, we say planned urban developments, we say planned developments.
Plan developments, yes.
Previously approved by the township.
There you go.
Okay, I like that.
So do you remove this last sentence also?
No.
No, you just amend it so it says about.
Because it's covered under the, it's already approved.
Yeah, we're gonna leave, we're gonna leave people who aren't in a planned development hanging.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking.
What about the planned developments, that part of it, like one section's done, but there's other sections that are not even started.
Sentence in here, I think it counts what you just said.
Well, no, if I, if I, after that, if I say the foregoing section, which would be the last sentence, the foregoing section shall not apply to establish.
Oh, sure, you're covering the entire paragraph, but that statement then.
Okay, well, that's a good question though. Like do they, they usually though, like do all the landscaping in the front first, right, before they start building?
Generally.
So Jim.
No, it will apply to, I mean, this section will apply to the first sentence, which says none going forward. That's dealt with in the second sentence.
Well, you don't, I mean, plan going forward means you don't have a tree there that, that's dying within the right of way to begin with, cause it wasn't approved.
Well, I could start this, the, we could start the third sentence by saying, except for existing planned developments, if a tree dies or is otherwise removed.
Okay, yeah, with the exception of, I could see that, mm-hmm. Is that how you put in like a grandfather clause? Like you'd say something like that?
Yeah, I guess I don't understand the reason for this last sentence if we insert the sentence you're suggesting.
So that anything that's already developed.
Let me finish, please.
Like Stonehill Village.
Let me finish. If, if the previous sentence is say, going forward, you're not gonna have any tree within the right of way.
Sure.
Right? It already covers that.
Yep.
Any existing plan that was already approved, you're free to replace that tree. So why do you need that sentence?
It, it doesn't really, the second sentence says nothing in this section, meaning the first sentence, nothing in this section shall be deemed to require a change in plans lawfully approved by the township prior to the effective date of this section.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that question. I'm talking about the last sentence.
Okay, okay, the foregoing, and I say, if you start the sentence with, except for existing planned developments, comma, if a tree dies, which would exempt it, effectively exempt it, I think.
Conservancy, that would be.
I hear you, but the engineer in me, the logic in me says this doesn't apply to moving forward because you've already covered it under the first paragraph. So when would you ever be in a situation where you would replace a dying tree unless it was already approved, which you've covered?
If you're not in a planned development and you lose an oak out by the road, you can't replace it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So we're only, we're only covering planned developments.
That are already existing.
So define for me what planned developments are, or better define for me what's not a planned development.
Well.
So any, any, any houses.
PUD, yeah, I mean, me not being in a planned redevelopment, if I have a tree in the right of way and it dies.
You're screwed.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So why are we restricting it to planned developments?
Because I believe that they've gone through the process at the expense, we've approved it, they've relied upon that, unlike somebody that's just got a stand of trees out in front of their house.
Yeah. How are we gonna word it?
And, and it's less likely that the non-planned development trees are going to be decorative trees and more likely to, to fall into the category of needing maintenance and needing, and creating safety standards.
I think one of the big things that happens with planned development trees as well is they were part of an approved landscaping plan. I mean, that, that was, that came before you and the, and the trustees and everybody kind of gave it their blessing and said, this looks great with, with a site plan. And now we're kind of going backwards from that.
We're giving a pass to the paths because they have invested and it's a broader group of people that have joined together into an HOA or otherwise.
It's because they've invested.
We're not giving a pass to somebody else who's a private owner who may have invested equally amount, just not in a planned development.
I think the safety net here is the planned developments went through a process with us. And I, I think there's a reliance argument here. I, I think if, if I have planted fifty free trees along my boulevard and to die aesthetically and practically, I think that you ought to be able to replace those two trees. If you happen to have a, if, if you've, if you have planted trees out in the right of way and you're not a PUD, you know, you're kind of on your own. I mean, I, I know that's a little harsh, but I do see a distinction between planned developments that have come through our process, specifically been approved, that the developers have relied upon that approval to create these. It may be, you know, it may be an artificial distinction, but it is a distinction.
I agree with you not being in a planned unit. I guess maybe I'm the only one here that's not in a planned development, but.
Looking, so like what, is there, can we like neighborhoods that aren't in plan, like this, like what, conservancy? Like what else? What else isn't a planned?
Is in a plan?
Isn't, yeah.
Is or is not?
Isn't.
Conservancy is a PUD.
It's a plan, so that would be, that would count. So like, what, are we just talking about like people that are up and down like Traybine? And like some of those other neighborhoods?
Yeah, I, I think you're talking about bigger, you know, places that have been there for sixty years, or, you know, up and down Traybine, down Ludlow.
Yeah.
And some of the farmhouse's on Beaver Valley that are left or whatever, I mean.
If there truly is a plan to expand Traybine Road, then that's gonna put the road right into people's streets.
I don't know what that's gonna do to this.
Well, I bet by takeoff.
Yeah, this is Dayton Xenia.
Right.
So this is over.
You know, it's easier to ask for forgiveness.
But I don't think that's. The other thing is enforceability, this is kind of.
So here, here my, here my being example for you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this back up of a non-planned development.
I don't think this one's a PUD.
Yeah, I don't either. So this is, I'm gonna turn off the zoning district layer, but this is right before you get to the school down here on Dayton Xenia. So this would be in a straight zoning district, not a planned development with a neighborhood.
So you get this neighborhood with a lot of houses next to each other, but it's not in a planned.
Yeah, it's an older.
It complies with the existing zoning. A PUD is a carve out.
Correct. But if we, we start looking in here.
So every one of these homeowners, when, when there was the first house that was built, they had to come in and get a zoning permit to, to build their house. And, and that probably required nothing more than what's your, what's your house look like?
Where's your footprint of your house?
Where you gonna put it at?
Yes.
And the development was still, I'm pretty sure on this one, to, the development was still planned, but it wasn't in a PUD, which is a separate zoning district. So the developer came in and developed it and even put out the laws.
It was already planned because it was platted.
Yeah, it was platted, that's what I'm looking for.
Plated developments instead of a PUD.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, I don't know when the first PUD in Beaver Creek Township was, but.
But here's an example to answer your question of kind of what that right of way looks like. So, I mean, it's defined, it's a dedicated right of way, it's a township, you know, is, has room in there to do whatever, whether it be easements.
Yeah, that doesn't look like fifty feet at all.
Let's see what it is.
Yeah, the middle out. Oh, yeah, you have that thing.
Oh, okay. So some, from one line to the other should be a hundred then, right?
No, it'd be fifty.
Twenty-five from the center line.
I thought it was twenty-five from the center.
No, but if you go line to line, that should be a hundred.
No, it's, it's twenty-five from the center line, so fifty from. No, it's, it's twenty-five from the center line, so fifty from.
The whole thing would be fifty.
Center of the road, twenty-five each way.
Yeah, and it's right.
So it's not fifty feet setback from the center, it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Right.
Is generally what the right of way is, yeah.
Some places may have.
It, it's gonna vary.
Yeah.
So I get the twenty-five feet, because you get these huge trees, they, they over.
I mean, go back and show that up on the corner, did you see that picture he just showed, like, look at this up here at the top, I mean, that is just.
But a lot of these, aerials are hard to read, you know, so, uh, and, and how I like to try and figure out where they exist is if you can kinda. Trace the dark line back to where.
Yeah, well, that one right on the corner where you had your, right, just up a little bit, that's definitely in that.
That's definitely in that, and that's.
That one's in there, this one's probably in there, this one's probably in there, this one's probably not in there.
You know, you're, you know, out of luck if it.
Is this, can I ask a question, like hypothetically, like, how do you handle this when honestly, I know that we've posted this in the paper? But I know probably nobody really read it, and we have people coming in from the community. When their trees die and they plant a new tree, are we just gonna go and tear them out, and then, I mean, how is that even gonna, how is that enforced?
Well, I assume there's a remedies section in the code.
I mean, like, what, what do you, what are we, what are we doing?
There is a remedies section in the code where you can, you can cite them, um, statutorily allows you to remove them. The whole point here is to make it easier, because right now, when they're going out and doing it, when the road department's going out and doing it, and obviously people get upset. Obviously, and so the point is, I think, less about the ones that were there, more about the future, so you don't have that problem. But there are still problems in some of the older neighborhoods and areas too. Um, so I think, you know, if it was bad enough that the township had to go and remove it, if it was fully in the right of way, they, they could.
Without even the regulation as far as that is.
Right, I mean.
So, but what if they do, like, what I, so what if a tree dies, one of those big ones, let's say, I mean, cause it's windy or whatever, it's old and it blows over. And they still, they plant, I mean, how are we, how, I mean, that's a lot of effort for us to go in and keep track and enforce. Like, to police everybody, I mean, how, how are we doing that?
I mean, I don't think it's gonna be something where they're literally every day checking every right of way, I think it's gonna be more of a.
Somebody's tree's gonna fall down, they're gonna go out and plant it back and not have any idea that they couldn't, until they get a notice from the township that. You know, you're violating.
Well, this is, this is a practical issue, and enforcement's always a practical issue.
Yeah.
And it's all about the sweet spot, um, if, if, if a, a, a tree is replaced, and the zoning inspector sees that. Especially if it is obstructive, um, or, you know, just, whatever. Um, they're more likely to enforce it if it's, you know, a sapling, you know, right on the edge of the, the border, I mean, it's like. You have to have rules enforcing, I mean, it's like speeding tickets.
I mean, I'm not against it, but you're gonna, when it does happen, I'm sure the homeowner's gonna be upset, but that's, that's what it is, you know.
And, and the homeowner also, at that point in time, hopefully it's caught early enough in the game after a fresh planting that, hey, if you move this back. Five more feet, it's out of the right of way and tree grows how you want it to grow.
Okay.
And again, when you look at the trees on that, that drawing, I mean, while the owners certainly bought the lot. They don't have a specific investment in those trees, unlike the PUDs, where they have gone out.
Right, I'm saying if they replace one, and, you know.
What are you gonna do about it?
Right, until you get.
Well, I argue their specific investment in that tree is that it was part of the lot that they bought, and they bought it because they had that tree on it.
But between the lack of a specific investment and the fact that it didn't go through the approval process, and the fact that it's probably not a decorative tree. I, I see a, I see a legitimate distinction.
I, I, I agree with you, I, I understand that.
Okay, wait, okay, then I like it, I like the language then, that we say what we're saying, and then it should be, we should add in, it should be a decorative tree then. So there's also that specific too, so you can still plant it, but it needs to be a certain kind.
So, to amend yours a little bit, uh, with the foregoing section shall not be applied to existing planned developments as approved. Uh, and that they, basically what I'm trying to say is that they're, they're putting back the trees that were approved to be there to begin with.
Like before, before it died?
Before it died, yeah, if I, if I go out and plant a, a, I don't know, an arborvitae, and that was part of my, my landscaping plan. Then I need to replace it pretty much with that arborvitae was approved.
Would this be clear if the second sentence, instead of saying the foregoing section, said the foregoing sentence? And this new language say the foregoing sentence, uh, or, or breaking these two sections apart. I found it a little confusing to, that the second sentence says this section, because the whole sent, the whole paragraph is the section. The foregoing provision.
So what exactly does that mean? Nothing in this section shall be deemed to require a change in plans lawfully approved by the township. Does that mean if you have an existing PUD and you've been approved for these trees, like, this isn't applicable to you?
If you're halfway.
I think the first, I think that's what Jim's saying, is it's the first sentence.
Andy, can I ask you to bring up the, the language?
Yes, sir.
And we can like edit it in real time instead of.
We'll give it a shot.
All right, let me just do it this way, let me, uh.
So Don, if you've, if you've got an existing development that isn't quite done, and you've got approved plans for it, you can put your trees in.
Yeah, I think the big, I know when this was being discussed, the big question was, some of those developments have very specific, like. Section two, section three, and sometimes they could be years apart when they're done. And if two is all one way, but three isn't done for five or six more years, does it apply to that one still or not? And so that was one of the things I think, you know, was a concern, but, I, I mean, if the, if. The thought is that if it's been approved, then it should be stayed, then I think, you know, if you guys think it needs to be clarified, then do that.
Which is really what we're saying about the third sentence too.
Yeah.
Is that if it's already been approved, they ought to be able to repair it.
Yes.
And I think, not to complicate things more, um, but I think there should be some language in there as to trees of. Like manner, because I know for a fact that, you know, Bradford pears are no longer legally.
Yeah, you're not supposed to be planted, yeah.
In Ohio, so if you have a boulevard that has all these Bradford pears, one falls down. Uh, I think you should, in an existing PUD, um, they should be able to replace it with something of like kind.
Character.
Or character, yeah, there you go, I mean, cause now Bradford pears are considered invasive.
Invasive, yeah.
So.
The foregoing provision shall not apply to existing planned urban developments.
Are we putting that after?
Can I, can I ask a question? If we just move the second sentence to the end, does that cover your concern?
I thought about that, um.
So, I'm, I'm, we're just gonna play right now, so I'm gonna take this, cut it and move it. This is gonna be a nightmare for your notes, Melissa, but. There was discussion on. So that was moving the second sentence down, like you just said.
All right, so, Jim, what's, what's that sentence again that you want to see added? And where would you put it?
Well, if he, I mean, the, the point now is, if we move the second sentence to the third sentence, do we even have to add anything, maybe just some clarification? I read that third sentence as saying, nothing in this section shall be deemed to require a change in plans.
That have already been approved, right?
That have already been approved.
Prior to the effective date of the section.
Yes, um. I just think that's a little squishy in terms of, is replacing a tree a change in plans? Do you think it is, Don, or?
No, I, I, I understand what you're saying.
Right, um, nothing in this section shall be deemed to require a change in plans.
Well, it says a change in plans. It doesn't say anything about, doesn't say anything about. That your grandfather, that, or that you can't replace it or anything else, it just says, nothing in a section shall be deemed to require. A change in plans, what does that mean? Change in plans?
That goes back to the, um, you've developed section one and two, but three still needs to be developed. You, you, you can still develop it the way that it was approved. Now, the question is, is that.
About that? Nothing in this section shall be applicable to a lawfully approved.
A lawfully approved what, though?
Lawfully approved, are you gonna put in PUD, or, I mean, what are you, what are we gonna?
So it isn't about the plans, it's about this entire section doesn't apply to plans already approved, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
We're trying to wordsmith the.
What if you take out the A and just applicable to lawfully approved plans?
Yeah, nothing in this section shall be applicable to.
That's what I was trying to get, so thank you.
To lawfully approved and existing. Uh, planned developments.
Plan developments.
Do we wanna specifically say planned developments or approved plans? But I can't think of an example where there might be an approved landscaping plan out there for something else.
Well, it's not a development, because we just showed all on Dayton Xenia Road right there, that's not a planned development, that's a business. So we have to think about somehow, well, we can also grandfather them into it, otherwise all those trees along Dayton Xenia, I mean, once they're gone, they're gone.
I'm gonna defer to a question to Randy real quick, Randy, do you know of any businesses, uh, that have came through, that have had to go through. One of our processes that had plans that might have had trees within the right of way?
Recently, anytime. No, um, unless they were related to an entry section.
Yeah.
Did the, um. The bombers, um. The CrossFit, did that have it?
I don't think they have any trees.
I don't think they have any trees up there either.
That, um, are you talking about on Beaver Valley?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to think of.
And the entry is that, that is an example of like an entry having existing trees that.
So this on Beaver Valley?
Yeah.
Yeah, right on the curb.
So, if you go.
This mouth is super sensitive.
By Seaventhalers?
North.
From north.
Keep going.
Yeah, I remember seeing it.
Yeah, it's right here. But I don't, I don't really see anything in the right of way there.
Tower, there, I don't think there's really.
So right in there, see where that.
Yeah, but that's all, yeah, Nathaniel's Grove.
Yeah, but those are out of the right of way.
Go into Ned's Grove a little bit. Those, I think, would be considered the right of way. I, I don't know where the right of way.
These guys?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that would be, once again, existing, I was just trying to think if there's anything business related that may.
So you're saying in that whole area, in the.
In that metal.
That metal?
Well, actually, it doesn't look like it's right of way.
Is it not right of way?
No, this is, looks like it's common area.
Or, yeah, that's why I was trying to.
I don't know why this isn't working over here, but every time I try and do a search, it's not coming up.
That's a big right of way.
Yeah, this, this is right of way, and that's probably common area.
Yeah.
Cause you got the two lines, I'm pointing like you can see what I'm looking at.
Okay, so go back to, um, like, our old scratches, where Dayton Xenia is.
It's Dayton Xenia Township Road?
County Road.
See, so it wouldn't apply.
So it wouldn't apply, okay, good. And nothing then going up there from Fairgrounds, then that wouldn't apply either to the bombers, cause Beaver Valley, all the way from there to there to Traybine is county road.
Yeah, because it does refer to in any township street.
Correct.
Okay, let me throw this out.
Okay, let me jump back.
Nothing in this section shall be deemed to affect the planting or replacement of trees. Lawfully approved by the township prior to the effective date of this section.
Thank you, that's very.
Say that again, do you know what you're saying?
Nothing in this section shall be.
Deemed to affect the planting or replacement. Of trees lawfully approved by the township prior to the effective date of this section.
I'm trying to get my, this keyboard's low off. Deemed to affect?
Deemed to affect.
The planting?
The planting or replacement of trees. Lawfully approved by the township prior to the effective date of this section.
Then you'll need to take out the second sentence, right?
At this, I'm, I'm, I'm moving the second sentence to the, to the end, and I'm editing it.
Put a township part two. Okay, so let's pull that one back, did the township actually approve? The planting of all those specific trees, or did they approve the plan in general?
With the PUDs?
With the PUDs, I think that has the whole, like, the site plan, I think, doesn't that have to list, like, where the trees are?
Now you're going more specific, you're saying that the actual trees that were approved. To be planted in those huts. I have no idea what they had planned, what they approved for our plot.
Yeah, I mean, I. There are site plans when they come in, I mean, they have the landscape features on.
What you're requiring, what you're requiring a homeowner to do then, is to open up those site plans and understand what was actually approved. Which could have happened many years before they purchased that.
Most, most of the trees within the right of way, especially in the newer planned developments. Aren't, they're in the right of way, so they're not a homeowner tree that, I would imagine would fall back to the HOA.
Not true.
Okay, can you give me an example?
I have my, I've got three acres.
And you're in a planned development?
None of those tr, I'm sorry.
And you're in a planned development?
Yes.
Okay.
I think Jeff's saying that his trees would not have been specifically approved.
Absolutely, they were not.
He, uh, he went rogue.
No. Well, Jeff, and I'm not trying to call you out, but.
No, you're, that's a good point.
I do think that all my landscape plans apply to like the common areas and the entryways, I don't know that they do the landscape for each and every.
Each and every house.
Where are you at, Jeff?
In the conservancy.
Okay.
But I don't think that your trees are in the right of way.
Traybine and Ludlow.
It's east north.
Jeff's trees are not gonna be in the right of way, if it's only twenty-five feet from the center line.
Oh, keep going up, Traybine's right there.
And some of them are original.
Keep going. Oh, there, yeah, okay, the, yeah, I was, we just had a Ferentz case up there, so, on Grand Portage.
So, we're all the way down Grand Portage to the end, where, uh, and right there at the intersection of Grand Portage and Passage Key, I'm on the one-two-two.
That one.
Yeah, so do you see those trees there? Those little ones that they planted?
That are out of the.
They're out of them right now.
Yeah, I got lucky.
You got lucky. Bro, you got lucky.
But your neighbor across the street, well, maybe, maybe not, though, if you go down to where they're.
Uh, no, they are very definitely.
They're very like.
They are very definitely within feet of the.
Yeah, I think, I think they're back.
That's like one of those shrubs that doesn't go anywhere, that's like one of those, what are they, the cypress, or what are those things that are, that.
Is it a tree?
Yeah, that grows like pine or something that grows.
Arborvitae trees grow straight up.
Those that were in the driveway, that's a disaster.
I, I hear what you're saying, and I guess I'm okay with that, if somebody isn't gonna come out there and. Well, these are.
Here a chainsaw in the morning, you better run out there quick.
Yeah. Don's out there with their goggles.
Randy.
If I, again, I've. The, the knowledge and understanding of what, uh, even the deputy director was kind of alluding to. Obviously, the, the whole intent is not to replace anything in the right of way, but if the intent is to do that. And you wanna talk about the specific tree, it's like the sugar maple, if a sugar maple falls, you don't necessarily want them, that's a provision, to replant a sugar maple.
Right.
You want a, a tree that's more adaptive to, um, you know, roadway landscaping, right-of-way landscaping.
But if it's in a PUD, I mean, if we're passing this or suggesting this, then it has to be, you know.
One of the approved trees, and, I mean, one of the.
An approved tree and also one that is congruent with the rest of the trees, you don't want a sugar maple, now you have all these pines. And then, well, the pine dies, well, you can't plant that, you get, you know, because, or if it's, like, say, the Bradford pear. You know, uh, they have different varieties out now, I guess, but, I mean, I'm just trying to keep.
Yeah, but then, then, and then, again, I think that falls back to the intent of that tree will grow the same way that all the other trees have grown and, and P the.
Yeah.
So if we add on here in this section specifics about what, so you, you, okay, you can replant it, but it has to be. Like approved, a township approved, or, I don't know, something approved tree, would, I mean. That would at least deem it so it can be something that wouldn't grow giant like that.
My simple question is, if you have Bradford pears down on, uh, boulevard, and one falls over, how do they, what do they plant?
Well, they can either choose to plant one of those or not.
Close to it as possible, right.
I mean, that's not longer available, but I mean, to keep the congruity of the, the aesthetics of it.
Is a sugar maple considered? Is a sugar maple considered a decorative tree?
I, I'm not an expert.
I, I don't know, I just-
I can't, I'm just-
So you gotta come on my su- sugar maples down.
I can't imagine it would be, I mean, it's-
You planted sugar maples?
I would doubt it would be.
Well, I actually did, and I-
There's kind of an arborist or urban standard for-
There is.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly what that is, but there is a, a standard for-
I'm not trying to make it complicated, I'll just-
No, a- a- absolutely. I think that, again, just making sure that, I think the intent was to just totally do any trees when they, and, and then-
Geez, I don't like this keyboard.
I don't like that, and no matter what I do, my tree is always on the lock keys.
I think exactly, deputy, uh, deputy director was of that, of that, you know, and they, most of the time, they're removing those trees,
See, that took the cities.
Oh, did it?
I'll confess it did.
And they don't want anybody to replace them.
Right.
So, I, I'm just giving you permission-
Yeah, so I've got plenty of Sunset Maples.
That's the intent.
Red Maples.
I don't know, that was linking up something else. Ooh, Asteria, that's pretty, but it looks bad. Geez, that royal purple smoke trees, you don't want this. You don't want that. I mean, it's really pre- I know, I'm like, what, what can I buy?
So can you go back to the verbiage there and-
Yes.
So I just wanna beat this to death. Nothing in this section shall be deemed to affect the planting or replacement of trees lawfully approved by the township, lawfully approved by the township prior to the effective date of this section. So, tell me how, who within the township would-
They'd have to come in and I guess pull the plants or-
Yeah, I do think that sounds like you're, you're approving all trees that are planted, and we don't do that.
Yeah.
So if we add the word decorative before trees, shall be deemed to affect the planting or replacement of decorative trees lawfully approved by the township prior to the effective date of this section.
Why can't you just put prior, uh, prior-
I don't understand what that, what that means legally.
Why can't you just put prior, prior, what is, what's another word for prior, prior, before?
Previous.
Previously approved. What do you have to have lawfully, it could just be previously approved.
Nothing in this section shall be deemed to affect the planting and replacement of decorative trees. I do think that adds something, um, approved.
Where is, is the explicit definition of what a decorative tree is and how how would that stand up in a legal law?
You, you would not do well as a lawyer, Jeff. You can, you can, you can grind it into the ground, and then I-
Yeah. I mean, why, why are you being explicit?
Because if it's a, you know, you need-
Your definition of the, is, of a decorative tree is very different from mine, so how do I, how do you know that?
Honestly, the even is correct, you just take out that if a tree dies, but I understand that doesn't get to the intent of-
I just know we have different tastes of what we're trying to do.
Well, I mean, there, there is, a decorative tree is a, that's not gonna be a difficult term to, um, let's see if there's another word.
I mean, it's a classification in landscape, basically.
And like with Stonehill, they've got a, uh, they've got a list of acceptable trees.
Is ornament really what we wanna, maybe that's why. Look up those skinny trees, it seems like, oh, they're really cool, I really like them.
How, di- how many P U Ds are in the? Do you know?
There's, I don't know off the top of my head, there's quite a few of them.
I mean, if there's twenty-five, I mean, it's-
Can we go back to the, uh-
Give me one second. Just trying to see if I can find, I, I-
That's too much work.
APA, I'm sure, has a, a list of decorative trees. But I'm back on, yes.
Alright, so replacement of decorative trees, what do you say, shown on?
I changed it up a little bit to try to get away from specifically of showing, approving trees, but instead of so, and now saying plant, trees shown on plans. Cause we don't really approve the trees, we just approve that there was trees shown on the plans.
Okay.
I'm gonna assume that Linda Bailey's trees were not shown on the plan.
Yeah, I guarantee one more.
She's the castle owner that was off.
Oh, 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 there, okay, yes.
And they replaced most of theirs from the tornado. And they were, they didn't replace them with the same kind of trees that were there before, so.
What happened to my? That was the one, uh, that we were looking at on the corner?
Right across the street from me.
Yeah. This one.
Yeah, the big one.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure they probably weren't. But at the same time, I'm not sure.
The, the point I'm getting at is the verbiage we have-
I'm not even sure they're in the right of way.
The verbiage we have in the, in this write-up here, I'm just concerned about how explicit we're being.
Are you gonna, are we gonna, I don't know, enforce this, are we gonna have to go out and measure?
Randy, how important is it that we have the last sentence in there about not replacing trees? Is that really a-
I, I'm, again, my understanding, that was the intent is not to replace it because if you replace it, it just eventually will create the same situation.
That was-
That was my understanding.
And, and I get that, we're, again, we're looking for the sweet spot here. If we can't plant any going forward, and we kinda let what we got in the neighborhood already stand, is, is, is that acceptable? I mean, does that get you most of the way?
I, I, I think-
I just don't understand how we're gonna enforce this, I just think it's gonna be like really, really hard.
The average Joe's gonna go out and replace his tree and not ask anybody.
Right.
I mean, and then we're already like, I don't know, I just don't see, see these, aren't these cool? I mean, you're gonna have to have like the tree police go around all the whole township, trying to like see who fall, what trees fallen, and where they still-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're going to save money by hiring plant police, right, so.
The I, I mean, and I'm just talking off the cuff here, that I think there would be an education standpoint, obviously, the service department goes out and tries to maintain the right of way. That causes quite a bit of controversy. However, I, you know, the citizens don't understand that that's, that's quite damaging to equipment, and again, you know, access and everything like that. But I, I've never heard that, you know, there was a, you know, absolute intent to replace those trees immediately in, in that type of a, a condition, um, again, I think it was, one, once it is removed, it is not replaced. That's where I was trying to suggest, if you don't want to, uh, suggest that going forward, and you want a replacement, that a replacement for an appropriate species of a, you know,
Whatever it is.
Urban development, or, or urban type of landscaping is appropriate. But again, I think the full intent, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Frickus, is that there was no replacement whatsoever.
Well, I think they were looking at, when, when you look at other things within the zoning code, like when there's for in, for instance, it's, if it's something that was grandfathered in, um, if it's changed, then you have to abide by the code.
Come into compliance.
And so I think that was the thought here, is if something changes, then you still have to abide by the code moving forward. But I get it, that it's, that's a-
Let's just say hypothetically, it snows a lot, okay, and you guys have the plows that come through, and it's really hard to tell where the road is. And when the plow truck comes through, even though, you know, the trees are, you know, right on the edge of where the line is, and it takes out road or the trees, but they technically can be, I mean, how would you even handle a situation like that? Whenever you, you can't, you're not supposed to, like, if they did that, and they, they like an R center thing, and they took out all the trees, like, we would just be out of them according to that, even though the plow wasn't plowing on the road, cause I mean, I've seen where plows overplow by accident, I mean, not intentionally, but I mean, how would, how would that even work?
Whether it's shown or included.
Well, if you're in a P U D, but it may be replaceable.
What if the language was, nothing in this section shall be deemed to affect the planting or replacement of trees shown or allowed in a lawfully approved plan by the township?
I'm good with that.
So you would, shown-
Or just or allowed.
Or allowed?
Or permitted, or-
Permitted.
Permitted's probably a better word.
More better?
More better.
That's technical.
Very technical.
You are smart.
I'm okay with that verbiage.
Nothing in this section shall be deemed to affect planting or replacement of trees shown or permitted on lawfully approved plans by the township. That actually should probably say on plans lawfully approved by the township.
Put the plans before that.
And just take it out of the issue.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna go over there, cause this keyboard hates me.
Getting more better.
Getting more better by the minute?
I don't think we'll get much better, though, I'm ready to-
I, I, I saw that dead horse go by, somebody was beating it stuff.
You said the first sentence, what did it say before?
So what are we doing about the, the-
Oh, it already said that. Planting of- Right of way on any township street in is prohibited.
Do we need, is there something to maintain the aesthetics?
Isn't that already controlled by the P U D? Typically, we're in HOA.
More than likely, it's gonna be controlled.
Okay, I mean, I'm fine with it, that's-
Ours is controlled, I'll say ours is controlled, I mean, there's only certain ones that we are, we allow.
Okay, I mean, that's fine, it's not needed, there's no sense for extra verbiage.
If we lost a tree on the Boulevard, and for whatever reason, a replacement was not, um, a replacement was not available, I, I can't imagine anybody not doing something that would be sort of like-kind.
Okay, well, I'm fine with it, the less verbiage is better, as far as I'm concerned, I just wanna-
Well, we can look up and see, and I know this is rare, but like, which are county roads and which aren't, does that have the ability to do that?
On the G I S system, not really.
I was just curious how, which it was impacted by, like, the other neighborhoods we were talking about that aren't, you know, planned, like, is it something we really need to even be concerned with?
I mean, you know-
Cause then, is Traybine, like, where's-
Traybine.
Is that a county road or no?
Yes.
That's a township road?
County road.
Okay, so everything up Traybine won't be impacted. Right, Dayton Zinia won't be impacted, Beaver Valley from Fairgrounds to Traybine won't be impacted.
Like, Fairgrounds could be impacted, well, there are some neighborhoods in, or some housing, I guess.
Yeah, back in there.
Yeah, oh, I guess it is back in there, there's a few on the road, but yeah.
Are those dedicated streets?
Yeah, I think those are.
Uh, you know, uh, down here, you know, Alpha Bell.
Mm-hmm.
Is that that, where is that?
Indian Red Bull. Just throwing out tal- uh, county roads.
Well, and my thing is, and I hundred percent agree with that, if somebody's right on the edge and it, your tree falls, then you can plant it five feet back, which is no big deal, I mean, you still get to plant the tree. Versus-
You put it fully on your property, and nobody's telling you anything different.
Yeah, and it was telling you different, versus our community just becoming treeless, I mean, that was my thing, I mean, I don't, and there's a lot of county roads that it's not gonna, that won't affect.
Sorry.
Right, you're only talking about the right of way, you're not talking about-
I'd like to make a motion.
I like it, I like how it's written, yep, me too. Okay, go ahead. Oh, Bob, what?
I said, I'd like to make a motion. The discussion, will we have any other discussion?
Okay, yeah, you're, okay, go ahead, sorry. Bob's not in the meeting tonight, go ahead.
Jim, anything you want?
Give me one more second. Nothing in this section shall be deemed to affect the planting or replacement of trees shown or permitted. So plans would include P U Ds, landscape plans, whatever somebody submitted to us.
If there was a plan that showed landscaping, that showed trees, then we approved it, then that would include it.
All inclusive, right?
Um, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Anyone else, Chris?
I'm good with it.
Thank you, Bob.
No problem.
Doing great.
Is there a motion?
I'd just like to ask one quick question before you make a motion.
I can make it, uh, if you wanna make it, that's fine.
So their motion, we, we've wordsmithed this quite a bit. So when they make their motion to recommend approval or denial, as amended, yes, I just wanna make-
As amended. As amended, yeah, just to prove as amended.
As amended?
Right.
Okay.
Go for it, Jim.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we plan, I mean, approve, recommend. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend that section eighteen point three-six regarding trees prohibited in street right of way be, um, recommended as modified, or what's, with changes?
Were you recommending that it be approved as amended?
As amended. Um, should I read it into the record?
Oh, I mean, it's up to you, you don't, I don't think it's necessary, but you can.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I mean, um, the section that we're recommending will state, planting, growing, raising, or cultivating any tree within the right of way on any township street is prohibited. If a tree dies or is otherwise removed from the right of way, comma, the property owner shall not replace that tree in compliance with this section. Period. Nothing in this section shall be deemed to affect the planting or replacement of trees shown or permitted on plans lawfully approved by the township prior to the effective date of this section.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a question on fast, how are we gonna know what the effective date is, like, how are people gonna know?
When this, when this gets approved and goes into effect.
It'll be, okay, okay, go ahead, second.
I'll second my second. Any further discussion?
No, we're good.
Roll.
Uh, yes. Mr. Brown?
Absolutely.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Mr. Greg?
Yes.
How do you feel, Melissa?
Okay, the next gen- or topic on our agenda is the township emails.
Yeah, I think this was brought back before you guys a while ago, um, as far as the township going to go to a township email for correspondence back and forth. Uh, they've, they've acquired those emails through Paragon, our vendor, uh, and we'll be rolling something out with that here within the next couple of weeks. I'll get you some guidelines and guidance to that, of how to access that, what your email address is. I, I just wanted to let the board know that that was coming down the pike.
Okay.
Okay, and as far as what's upcoming in, you know, on the first of August?
So I have nothing on the agenda, uh, nothing's been filed for that. I would like to have, uh, a meeting with the zoning commission that night, uh, just to go over procedures, what you'd like to see from me, kind of a workshop meeting. Uh, since we have no cases, that would be a great time for it.
I, I know I will be out of town on the first of August, but I-
Are you going anywhere fun that we can tag along?
Canada.
Canada, well, I do have to say that if we have these meetings, I always demand pizza, so, just so you know.
Okay, could probably arrange something, okay.
Off the record.
So, uh, I just kind of, uh,
I can bring my own pizza.
Where we're at, uh, what we can do, what you'd like to see from staff, and so on and so forth.
Okay, well, I, I think right now, I'm, I'm available.
As long as there's pizza, I got it, okay.
Off the record.